There are a member that will certify our closed session for us?
I move that the Williamsburg, Dade County School Board. I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the WJCC School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. As stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Aller, if you don't mind.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. For the viewing audience just joining us, we will be joined by Ms. Donner in a few moments. She's running a little behind, but she will be making this meeting. And Dr. Beers is still dealing with a family matter, urgent family matter, and so we'll be thinking of him as well. Is there a member that will approve our agenda as presented this evening?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there any discussion on our agenda regarding our agenda? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Sort ago.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Herron for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to begin by welcoming everyone back from what I hope was a restful spring break. The fourth marking period began yesterday, and we look forward to a strong and successful end to the school year for our students and for our staff. Through though the fourth marking period is just underway, we're already looking forward to welcoming our newest learners to WJCC schools next year. Kindergarten registration for the 2023-24 school year is open right now. Families are encouraged to register now if their child will be five years old by September 30th, 2023. Visit wjccschools.org for more information. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my short report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. I've been driving through the city, the communities, and seeing those banners in the elementary school yards. And I just can't believe we're already back there. It's just, it's a, it's a fun time. Any board members have any reports this evening? Okay, we'll move on to our public comment. Do we have any last minute community members? No? Okay, and we'll move on to then our proposed agenda items for this evening. Item six one, review the local plan and budget for career and tech education. This is our Carl D. Perkins grant for the school year 2324. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Walter will present, as she does for the last several years, the local plan and budget for career and technical education. And I'm going to hand the presentation over to her. Ms. Walters, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Herron, and members of the board. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act focuses on improving the academic and technical achievement of CTE students and strengthening the connections between secondary and post-secondary education. Perkins affords states and local communities the opportunity to implement a vision for CTE that uniquely supports the range of educational needs of students, exploration through career preparation, and balances those student needs with the current and emerging needs of the economy. Each year, we are required to develop and implement a local plan for CTE in order to be eligible for funding. This plan has been reviewed and approved by members of our 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, and I will be presenting the plan to you this evening, which is broken up into sections referred to as schedules. There are a total of 18 schedules in addition to the annual performance assessments in the Perkins Local Plan. In alignment with our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, the Perkins Five Plan supports academic achievement and college and career readiness, educational equity, and access for all students, and communication and engagement of a variety of stakeholders. The 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is made up of representatives from each of the stakeholder groups listed on this slide. The advisory committee, which meets throughout the year, has been involved in the development, implementation, and evaluation of WJCC's CTE programs. We would like to thank all members of this committee for their dedication to CTE and for reviewing, providing input, and approving this year's local plan at the meeting on April 11th, 2023. Their participation in this committee provides invaluable insight and a wealth of knowledge and resources for which we are truly grateful. A list of the specific members of the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee members is listed on Schedules One and Two of our local plan. Part of the Perkins Five Plan includes an examination of WJCC performance on identified standards in comparison with Virginia agreed upon performance levels. This information, based on the 2021-2022 school year, is broken down on this slide for you and can be found on page seven in the local plan provided. When viewing the slide above, a CTE completer is a student who has met the requirements for a career and technical concentration or specialization in all requirements for high school graduation or an improved alternative education program. Special populations is defined by nine different categories a student may fall in, including students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, and students with a parent who are active duty military. In the slide above, you can see that WJCC met and exceeded Virginia agreed upon performance levels in all but one of the categories identified here. For the 2021-22 school year, we did not meet the performance level in non-traditional program concentration. Non-traditional program concentration is the number of CTE completers from underrepresented gender groups who during the 21-22 school year completed a program that leads to employment in non-traditional fields. The term "non-traditional fields" means occupations or fields of work such as careers in computer science, technology, or other current and emerging high-skill occupations for which individuals from one gender comprise less than 25% of the individuals employed in each such occupation or field of work. An example of this would be females working in the engineering field or males working in the nursing field. Non-traditional program concentration continues to be an area of challenge in WJCC and a focus for improvement for us as a team. As a division, we've been working to address this area, and while we are still under the state agreed upon performance level, we have seen an increase in our performance in the past three years. In the next slides, I will review three-year trend data and highlight the growth in non-traditional programming of over 10.46% since the 1920 school year. Here we see a continuation, excuse me, of the Perkins Performance Standards, but with three-year trend data. Here we see minor decreases in reading, math, and technical skills attainment, but while these are decreases, they are small and could be reflective of a wide variety of impacts on learning faced by students and teachers last school year. On this slide, you're able to see the three-year trend data for three additional performance standards, including non-traditional program concentration. In the 1920 school year, our non-traditional programming was at 13.07% and has grown to 23.53% last school year, an overall growth of 10.46%. Each year, we aim to grow in the number of industry credentials our students earn. Last year, there were 1,796 total credentials earned by WJCC students. On the next slide, you'll see a three-year snapshot of this information to provide historical reference for you. Above is a sampling of the different types of credentials taken and earned by WJCC students in 2021 to 2022. Here you can see a breakdown of industry credentials earned by WJCC students in the 21-22 school year, including the overall number of individual students who earned one or more credential. As a comparison, I have provided the previous two years' data as well. Here we can see that while we dropped in credentials earned during the 1920 school year, which was directly related to school closures due to COVID, we are continuing to grow in our number of credentials earned by students. Additionally, each year, we are required to submit a career pathways plan of study aligning specific academic and technical coursework at the secondary and post-secondary level with an identified career cluster and career pathway that meets the needs of industries in the state, region, or local area. This is reflected in Schedule Three or Page 13 of the local plan. For 2023-24, WJCC is submitting a plan of study representing the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, or STEM, cluster, and the Engineering and Technology Career Pathway. This plan of study offers a pathway that highlights WJCC's growth of engineering courses at the high school level this school year. There are eight CTE program areas identified within Perkins. Here you can see all eight areas and where CTE programs are available to WJCC students within each area. Schedules five to 10, found on Pages 19 to 30, refer to our Perkins-supported program areas and allow us to identify activities we use to improve academic and technical skills of students found on Schedule Five, provide students with work-based learning opportunities in Schedule Six, develop, improve, and expand the use of technology in Schedule Seven, provide professional development to teachers, counselors, or administrators associated with the CTE program on Schedule Eight, use performance standards to continue to improve the performance of these CTE programs on Schedule Nine, and on Schedule Ten, improve, expand, or modernize each particular program area. Schedules 11 to 14, on Pages 31 to 35, include narratives providing further explanation and details about our CTE program and the information we have already reviewed in this presentation. This is a review of the entitlement of funds over the past several years. You can see that this year's Perkins application is based on the amount of funding we received last year. Once the state determines WJCC's actual allocation, we will submit a grant amendment that aligns with the new funding amount. The state receives their allocation of federal funds and then applies a funding formula that determines what each locality will receive. This formula is based on the number of students who reside in the school division and also takes into account the number of students aged five through 17 who are from families below the poverty level for the preceding fiscal year. Schedules 16 through 18, found on Pages 37 to 44, are the areas in which we develop the budget for WJCC's Perkins allocation. The percentages indicated above are the breakdown of usage of entitlement of funds shared on the previous slide. As noted in the slide, we have budgeted 54.4% to go to capital outlay and equipment. Those funds are used to refresh labs, provide hardware and software such as 3D printers, infant simulators, micro bit kits for all CTE programs. 24.3% is budgeted to purchase services or services acquired from an outside source. These include professional development, student activities for our students in special populations, and New Horizons Regional Technical Center. 18.26% has been budgeted for indirect costs and other charges and internal services such as conference registration fees, travel, and lodging, professional organization memberships, and daily shuttle transportation for our dual enrollment health science students to the VPCC campus. And 3.04% is budgeted for personal services, which is used for administrative support for CTE credentialing and completer surveys. As a note, the grant does refer to this line as personal services, not personnel, which can cause confusion at some times. The biggest adjustment here from previous years is in capital outlay and equipment. As we continue to grow in our programming, the needs to remain current in our equipment and software for students grow, and redirecting funds to this line is in the best interest of students. This concludes our formal presentation of the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Any questions for Ms. Walters? Ms. Sort ago?
For the capital outlay and equipment, do all the programs, I imagine certain programs need more equipment than others. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, so, and some equipment is more expensive than others as well. There's a state-approved equipment list that we're required to identify the equipment on before we can purchase it as well.
So it's just some just don't need it, don't, don't get it. Some programs?
Some don't need as much as others, yes.
I think every program is, can make a request, but if a new program started, that would take more of the money in a particular year.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hummel.
Um, I had two questions. The first question is, I've been sitting here for now eight years, hearing about the non-traditional. Does the 28.5% ever change?
It actually grows. So last year it was 28%, and now it's 28.5%. So while, and that is in all areas, they increase, or most areas it increases annually. So as we continue to work towards that goal, it is also moving the marker a little bit as well. But I do think a lot of hard work has gone into the growth we've seen over the past three years.
Okay, thanks. I was just like, gosh, it just seems like we've made such progress in it. And then my other question was on Slide Nine, where you say you have to do a new submission, and we're doing the science, technology, engineering, mathematics. Like, so, so every year, they expect us to do a new plan of study?
Yes.
And then, does some of the old plan of studies that maybe aren't highly attended, do they drop off? Like, what happens in that evolution of the plan of studies?
So part of the plan of study also includes what the coursework would look like at our local community college when a student continues in that pathway, which also sees changes in growth. So you can see on that slide, or actually, no, it's right there, in 1819, we also did STEM. This plan of study looks a little more up to date than what it did in 1819. And so part of that is, the goal is to keep current, the information and the plans of study for the different clusters and pathways.
Okay, so, other, you don't drop plans of studies, or sometimes you do, or?
We don't necessarily drop them, but through this process, we do make sure they're more up to date as changes happen in not just education K-12, but also in post-secondary options.
Thanks.
I have one question. The Perkins Grant money is just for CTE students to use, right? So if there was an English teacher that wanted to use the 3D printer, she would not really have access to that because that's just for them. Okay.
That's correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
I think Ms. Young's been waiting.
Right, I ask this every year. I know that non-traditional has become, it's been a performance standard, I think, ever since I've been on the school board. Do you have any idea when that first entered into the Carl G. Grant?
I don't know, but I can find out. It's also important to note, too, that what courses are identified as with students who may qualify as non-traditional also changes annually. So each year, in the fall, we review, when the state releases their manual, we review and all of our courses to be sure there's no changes there as well. But there have been times that we've had courses that used to count towards that, that no longer do. So we work with it as sometimes a moving target.
They are making it a moving target because to me, I mean, even having this performance standard, I don't even know why I think it's, I don't think it's important personally. And part of the reason is, is because I want students to have the opportunities. I want them to pursue what they're interested in. And to me, I think, looking at that performance standard, it's more of a support standard for those students that want to go into non-traditional fields. I mean, I have two grandsons that are nurses, and, you know, and they're perfectly happy with their careers once going to become a nurse practitioner. But I, I mean, we basically perform a support role in this area, right? Where students that went, like, if you are a girl who wants to become an engineer, we support her in that. We don't force her into that.
Oh, correct, yes. We, we work with students, CTE aside, across the board on fostering their interests and aligning their goals with what their opportunities are here. So, yes, we would not force a student into a course based on this performance standard.
Right, and I appreciate everything you do. I, you know, this is an area that's really important and near and dear to my heart. I support our students in this area because I, I, number one, I don't think every student should go to college. And, but those who do, they should want to be there because college is no longer a passing fancy. It's a, it's a real commitment of funds and time. But I, I just, I would be interested to know, is there, do we have any idea how they decide which courses they're going to or which areas they're going to drop, or is that just every year is a new, a new awakening?
I don't want to paint it that there's massive changes every year. It's based on the industry field that the course is aligned to. And I have to check the exact data that they use to determine which ones become non-traditional or stop becoming non-traditional, but I can get that information to you.
I mean, it's just interesting, but can, can you tell me, for example, how many, do we, do we know, do you know offhand? It's kind of a crazy question, but you know offhand how many of our girls are planning on attending engineering school, going on to engineering programs in state college, Virginia State Colleges this coming year?
I don't have that information, no, I'm sorry.
Or any other field where it might be considered a, you know, a man's, a man's field, or even vice versa, a woman's field? I mean, I would be interested in if, how many of our students, I mean, we, I guess, you look at that number, we can see that that's not.
Is that information that's typically tracked?
Not necessarily, as far as when students leave, we can know what they might say, some are still undecided, what they ultimately do. But that's not information I would have access to right now.
Oh, okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay. No, you're fine.
I just think it's, it's curious, and they keep increasing the number. Okay?
I don't.
I'm going to sign up for an engineering course tomorrow.
Ms. Sort ago had another.
One more question about credentials on Slide Eight. The fact that I thought when you were first talking that you were comparing it to the 1920 school year, like, a hundred years ago, I was like, wow, that's a, what a data.
2019, 2020.
That was my fault, dad. Credentials, so one credential or more, so is one credential, does that mean that they have a skill that is employable? Does that mean, does that have a monetary value to it?
Potentially, but it is something that students can say, depending upon the field that they go into. So for example, I'll use workplace readiness is a pretty popular credential across the state. But it also, it assesses the skills that a student is ready to enter the workforce across the board. So it could be in retail, it could be in engineering. And so a student being able to tell an employer that they have that is something that employer would be interested in knowing. So it, it may not necessarily directly tie to a monetary value, but it could tie to employment.
It's not like a Level One welding certificate.
Some of them are. So on, on Slide Seven, you can see just a sampling of the different credentials that are earned. That includes credentials that our students earn while at New Horizons, which may be welding. You can see the ASE, there's engine repair, suspension, and steering, that's all for auto mechanics. And so those would definitely be tied to, I guess you could equate it to a monetary value because you need those to get a job.
And the, and the number, the 1796, that's not students, right?
Correct, that's total credentials.
Some students have more than one.
So some students could earn more than two or three, especially, for example, these ASE ones that we were just referring to. Many students have earned all of them last year.
I think we're going to go around to Ms. Hummel and then Ms. Young, but I also want to remind us that if we have a lot of lingering questions, we can submit SBQs before our next meeting next week, but Ms. Hummel?
This isn't really a lingering question. It's, again, I've been listening to this for the last seven years. So under the industry credentials on seven, it, it would be, just for future purposes, it would be nice to know, like, which one of these happens through the, through New Horizons? And what ones are, like, through the school systems? Because, for example, I know that the Y's financial literacy is something that, that's just part of our curriculum, right? Required part of our curriculum. And so from past meetings, that's been a very large percentage of the industry credentials. So you see the 1796, but there's, it just, but there's a lot of it that's the financial literacy. Not all, you know, but it is just a big, a big chunk of it. And so for me, always I'm looking at this, and then Project Lead the Way is that the ones that are still offered through are high schools? So just for.
For future, sure, sure.
You know, it just is one of those, like, oh, these are offered through New Horizons, these are offered through the high schools.
And just as a note, too, out of those 1,796 earned, 493 were wise. Yeah, that's.
I had a similar curiosity about BPCC, you know, where that fit into the mix, but yeah. Ms. Young?
What did you say about the 496?
493 of the 1,796 credentials earned were the Y's industry.
Oh, right, because our students are required to do that. Would it, would it be possible, well, it won't matter to me because I won't be here. But I would be interested to see, like, how many credentials were earned in criminal justice, how many were earned in each of those areas? I don't need to know who jumped over and earned the other credentials, but it would be just interesting to, to see how many. Maybe, maybe just, I think it's kind of important, actually, to maybe to see where, I'm sure New Horizons might even keep some of that data.
Oh, yes, we have, we have a breakdown.
Oh, okay, good.
And we can certainly provide that for the board, just as, because it is good information in terms of the number of students or credentials in each area and where they are provided, whether it's in school or in New Horizons.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. There's a lot of great interest. Thank you, Ms. Walters, there's a lot of great interest around CTE and the Perkins Grant that you, you apply for each year for us. And so I really appreciate all of your work and your committee, whoever's behind you, making sure that this happens every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item six two, revise, review revisions to the advisory committee bylaws.
Mr. Chair, every two or three years, the by, the board committees have the opportunity to review and make changes to their bylaws. And we have some minor changes from each of the committees this evening. And Dr. Brown is going to start with the SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee. Dr. Brown?
Good evening Chairman Dow, Dr. Heron and members of the board. The Special Education Advisory Committee recommends revisions that align their bylaws with the updated policy, BCF. Dr. Boemaster, who is our Special Education Parent Resource Coordinator, and I worked through the revision process with the committee. The deletions in the revised bylaws are items that are now found in policy BCF. The secretary position is deleted as those responsibilities are completed by division staff who are support staff and not a voting member of the committee. The addition of the meeting months recognizes the longstanding meeting schedule the committee has maintained. Meeting eight times during the year exceeds the state requirement of four meetings per year, but allows for more productive work on the part of the committee. As part of this process, the committee also identified that the Virginia State Guidelines for the Special Education Advisory Committees were a valuable resource for committee members. At this time, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, there's a red line copy and under executive content, if you haven't seen it. Any questions for Dr. Brown or Dr. Heron? I think for my part, what, three years ago, being new on the board, it seemed like there were some challenges getting activity amongst committee members for, for SEAC, building a quorum, maintaining a quorum. It doesn't sound like we have that issue any longer, it sounded like there's a.
Knock on wood.
If you believe in that sort of thing. No, but it sounds like things are running pretty smoothly, like there's a good bit of engagement within the committee.
I think we're making some good progress.
I think we see that with the number of additional months that they're willing to work.
That's right.
And that's what we need, so thank you to, to you and to Ms. Boujoual and to the committee members that have dedicated their time to this very important committee. If we don't have any other questions, thank you, Dr. Brown.
And we're going to pass back to Ms. Walter to do the revisions to the Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee.
Good evening again. Tonight, we present to you a recommendation to change and shorten the name of the Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee to the Career Ready Advisory Committee. Many of you have also shared that it was awfully long before. A current version of, or, excuse me, the current version of the CTE bylaws was, was very short. And in feedback over the last two years from the committee, we, we work together to build changes to add more clarity and definition to the committee's purpose, membership and operating procedures. And I welcome any questions you may have about those, those changes and additions.
I think it looks pretty straightforward, Ms. Walters, thank you. Something we can support, absolutely. Dr. Heron?
And last and not, not least, Ms. Boujoual will speak to the Student Advisory Committee changes.
Good afternoon. The Student Advisory Committee is recommending some minor revisions to their bylaws. Changes include identifying the department responsible for the committee as the Department of School Leadership. That department didn't exist when Student Advisory Committee initially was created. And a majority of the topics are, are relevant to school leadership. Obviously, Student Services will continue to work with them closely. Also, we have changed the student membership to clearly identify that it is a two-year membership, except if your first year is, is a member as a senior, because obviously that won't work. And finally, we did adjust the, the meeting schedule to just say that it's on alternating months during the school year. That creates the flexibility so that we can start it as soon as you approve those. And sometimes that's been October and sometimes that's been November. So it just lets us get going as soon as those number, those students' names are approved.
That's great. Questions for Ms. Boujoual on these minor revisions?
Very minor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boujoual. Okay, move on to item six three, review purchase requests for high school student laptops and yearbook media center desktop computers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Landers is making his way to the, the table to, to discuss this item. And basically, the computers this evening that we're requesting are part of the Division Technology Refresh Cycle. Mr. Landers?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration of and approval at the next meeting of purchasing replacement laptops for high school student use, as well as desktop computers for high school yearbook labs and media centers in support of our ongoing technology refresh cycle. The purchase request will provide one hundred and forty-five laptops for high school student use and one hundred and fifteen desktop computers for yearbook labs and media centers. The purchase does include extended warranty and services for a total purchase price of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. The purchase will be made using the TIPS contract with Lenovo. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Landers. Questions for Mr. Landers or Mr. Snipes? You're not on this one?
No.
Mr. Landers?
I got up to be here a little early, so we didn't have.
You did, you got here early, okay. Any questions for Mr. Snipes? So the, my curiosity, the yearbook labs and media center circulation desk, these are for our high schools?
Yes, sir.
Just for the high schools, I know middle schools have yearbooks, but they're not going to be utilizing these types of labs?
Well, the middle schools don't have the yearbook labs, but the media centers, they do have similar desktops. But these are, these are dedicated to the high schools at this time.
And again, just my own curiosity, the schools themselves have offered some insight into what would suit them best? Or is this, how did, how did we come about?
Absolutely, we, we keep a ongoing working group committee made up of teachers, our technology integration coaches, media center representatives that meets throughout the year. Some years it's more focused toward elementary, other years it's focused more toward secondary. And they actually get to look at, touch, feel, use the devices before we ever purchase them.
And lastly for me, you mentioned the TIPS contract and we got a bit of an education on what that means in a recent meeting.
You're not going to ask what that's.
No. I am not. But how are we paying for this?
This is budgeted within the technology cost center.
Good, thank you. Yes, Ms. Ortega?
The one hundred and forty-five, are those just for, for high school students replacing one hundred and forty-five for the personal use? Or is this in addition to the laptops they each have?
It's, it will be a replacement. If you'll remember, a couple of months ago, we brought another purchase. As we constantly are going through our list of what devices are falling off warranty, we found an additional one hundred and forty-five that actually would have been expiring in the middle of the year and we wanted to go ahead and get ahead of those.
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, your report. Move on to six four, review award of contract for invitation for bid number two zero two three zero nine three eight, Clarebird Baker Restaurant Renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Snipes is here to address the next two items that are both capital improvement items this evening.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item for your consideration is a review of award for IFB number two zero two three zero nine three eight. The Clarebird Baker Restaurant Renovations Project was approved in the fiscal year twenty-three CIP in the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The base scope of work includes floor-mounted toilets and flush valve replacements, replacing wall-hung lavatories, urinals and flush valves, replacing drop-in kitchen sinks in workrooms and art rooms, replacing cast iron sinks in kitchens with stainless steel sink and foot pedals, and readjusting the lavatory and urinal anchoring as needed, in addition to painting the walls. We are adding, we have requested two add alternates for this bid. The first add alternate is to salvage the toilet and urinal partitions, to replace ceramic tile floors, wall bases and Wayne Scott in restrooms, and installing mar, marble doral thresholds. I know that sounds expensive, so that's why it's an add alternate. We are reinstalling and salvaging toilet and urinal partitions in pre-construction locations. The second all add, all add alternate is to replace the drop-in sinks, faucets and drains and we call them bubblers, but they're really water fountains in the classrooms. So the base scope of work will include restrooms. Second add alternate will include some replacing of some toilets and partitions and hardware. And the third, and the second, excuse me, the second all add alternate is to add into replacing sinks in classrooms. At Clarebird Baker, we do have some classrooms with sinks. Again, this was a placeholder agenda item, so at the time the item was prepared, the pro, the bid opening process had not been completed. The superintendent recommends the school board review the bid information and be prepared to award the Clarebird Baker restroom renovation at your April eighteenth meeting. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Ms. Hummel?
Have you thought about changing the name of the bid or you can't? Because I mean, it's not just restroom renovations. It's like plumbing, it's kitchen, it's the sinks, it's the.
No.
You just have to keep the same.
Yeah, the bid has already been sent out and since the process has already started. But since the basic part of this bid was for restrooms and the add alternates were, if we had additional monies remaining from the budget, we were going to do the additional repairs.
And then bubblers to me are those, those like things that you rent and they, you put the bottle, big bottles of water and you replace them. Is that, is that not what this, what is a bubbler?
A bubbler in the, in the, in this format and in the industry is a water fountain.
A water fountain, okay.
You have a water fountain on some of the sinks, that's what.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Ms. Ortega?
So, so it's dependent on what you get back from the bid to see if you do.
Correct.
One and two.
So what you ask the, in the bid is for them to provide a total base bid and then to give us additional costs to add for the add alternate one and add alternate two. So it's the lowest and responsive, most responsible bidder for the total base bid, plus the add alternates, according to the contract, we get to decide who gets that bid because it's just not the total base bid. It can be the total base bid plus the, plus one of the add alternates or both of the add alternates.
So one bidder could come in lower on the base bid, but, but then higher with the alternate.
That is correct. That's correct, so someone could come in below with the base bid and then when you add the add alternate, they're no longer lowest, they're higher. So we get to choose, it's not just based on the lowest base bid.
But is there a scenario where you would just abandon the add alternates?
If there was not enough budget involved, if we didn't have a budget, we could say we're not going to do add alternate one or we're not going to do add alternate two. Typically, these add alternates are in the order in which we prefer, so that's why.
Without asking you to tip your hand, how often do you include add alternates? And I don't recall ever hearing.
I know.
But we, we've included add alternates, I think in a previous, last month, as a matter of fact, we did, we did an add alternate for a project.
First time I've heard that, me too.
It sounds smart to me, I just had not heard it before.
Don't give me credit for it, I'm the predecessor's. Give Joe Grab credit for that one.
Ms. Young?
Is, is there a, I mean, when I go shopping, I compare shop, comparison shop, like, like most people do and some things are better quality than others. I mean, is there a quality standard for the things that we ask for in these bids?
They have to meet, they have to meet certain plumbing standards, yes, from our ashtray standards. So yes, they are a certain standard.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on to item six five, review contract for zero eight zero eight one nine carpet replacement at Matthew Wayley Elementary School.
Thank you. Again, tonight's proposed agenda item for your consideration is the review of contract number zero eight zero eight one nine, which is the carpet replacement at Matthew Wayley Elementary School. This project was also approved in the FY twenty-three CIP in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The scope of work for this project includes selective demolition, which will, we're demolishing some carpet and removing carpet in classrooms, as well as replacing the carpet and some tile work because some classrooms have a little bit of tile at the front. So we will, that is the, the project in this circumstance. This is an approved vendor through Sourcewell and it has been approved by the county to use this contract and to approve any appropriate vendor on that contract. Like I said, funding for this project was approved in the FY twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan and the superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the April eighteenth meeting.
So still out for bid?
Still out for bid, but we also have, we have to have a contract that we can look through and we just are now trying to finalize with that contractor if they will be able to, what price they will be providing. So there are different vendors on this Sourcewell contract and we reached out to a few of those.
Any last questions for Mr. Snipes? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on, Dr. Heron, to item seven one, Strategic Plan Update, Year Five Progress.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are excited tonight to start to bring you some of the progress on our strategic plan goals and to, to set off the several weeks of, of information tonight. Ms. Walls, our Strategic Communications Officer is going to speak about our progress in Goal Three, Communications and Engagement. Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on Strategic Plan Goal Three and share about the exciting things happening with the Communications and Engagement Team. Goal Three centers on the Division's commitment to cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. There are five strategies within this goal. And while we work to support each strategy every day, our area of focus this year was developing and implementing plans to expand and more deeply engage our stakeholders. The Engage With Us portal serves as one centralized location for staff members, families and community members to find available opportunities to engage in short-term or ongoing projects. Launched in August, we've promoted thirteen Engage With Us opportunities so far. Involvement opportunities differ from one another and have varied throughout the year. Stakeholders may express an interest in volunteering for a one-time opportunity or at regular intervals, may seek to serve on a team, committee or work group, or may complete a survey. Ignoring the volunteer opportunity momentarily, I'll come back to that later, our highest level of involvement was four hundred and sixty-eight individuals responding to the twenty-three twenty-four school year calendar. We've invited stakeholder engagement in other ways throughout this year too, in targeted opportunities that didn't exactly fall under the Engage With Us umbrella. As previously reported in other school board presentations, we found comparatively high engagement on targeted surveys about budget priorities and tier, and tier and start times. A component of our outreach and engagement efforts is hosting family academies. Following staffing adjustments to the Communications and Engagement Team this past fall, we're excited to offer four family academies this spring, one of which was held in January. The topic in January, planning for advanced courses and opportunities, was geared toward families of fifth and sixth grade students. We had a hundred and thirty-four attendees participate in this virtual opportunity. Through all family academy events last year, we had three hundred and four participants. We know the success of academies rely on presenting compelling topics that families are interested in. We feel confident the remaining topics are of interest and will meet the moment. But to that end, I would encourage our stakeholders to submit additional topics of interest through Engage With Us at wjccschools.org/engage. We will be using this feedback to plan topics throughout the summer to offer a robust menu of opportunities in the twenty-three twenty-four school year. While our focus area for the year was on engagement and expanded involvement opportunities, our team covers other areas that all serve functions of communications and outreach. When I presented last year, I noted that success would also be evidenced over the year by launching a newly developed staff intranet, opening the teacher supply shop and expanding content creation and presence. Insider is our staff intranet and is a streamlined, easy-to-use launching point for staff news, tools, documents or resources. Insider launched this past fall. The teacher supply shop is a resource for WJCC schools staff to order and receive free classroom or workplace supplies. Teachers so commonly dip into their own pocket to stock their classroom, so the notion was to establish a completely donor-supplied shop where staff could quote-unquote "purchase" common supplies they need without spending a dime. In the two months since its launch in February, we received four hundred and forty-one total orders from three hundred and fifty-three total staff members. We've received generous support from a number of individuals who both purchased items and made monetary donations. The Prescription Shop, Primus Bank, Pediatric Dental Specialists of Williamsburg, William &amp; Mary School of Business Gives Accounting Society and EYUS and King of Glory Church hosted supply drives on our behalf. Papa John's, Publix and Wal. Papa John's, Publix and Walmart contributed financially, but our launch wouldn't have been possible without the ten thousand dollar donation from the WJCC Schools Foundation. We thank, send our thanks again to the foundation and all of our partners for investing in our staff. We also want to continue engaging our audiences where they are. This includes pitching stories to media outlets, we've tallied thirty pitches this year as of mid-March, issuing twice monthly staff and family newsletters, building our social media presence and generating more content. Our content generation has been significantly supported by our colleagues through our new communications request form. Try as we might, our team just can't be everywhere all at once. Uh, the communications request form empowers staff throughout the division to submit news and events and we're pleased to have received just under a hundred submissions since our launch in August. In looking at data, the follower or subscriber numbers reported here for our social media platforms reflect change from July first, twenty-twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Follower data is one way to measure our audience, though we do anticipate that platforms where we have been actively present for several years, like Facebook, will eventually plateau. Engagement rates generally tell us interaction on posts, like comments, shares or likes, as a function of how many times the content has been viewed. This data seen here represents, uh, spans from July first, twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, twenty-three and it's compared to the same time period from the previous year, if available. While the numbers presented here reflect engagement on all posts on that platform overall, we also monitor engagement for individual posts. Shown here is our top performing Facebook post this year and perhaps of all time. My Li Chin is a seventh grade student at James Blair Middle School. She received a Best of Show Award from the Williamsburg Regional Library Youth Art Contest. This specific post generated seven hundred and seventy reactions or an engagement rate of one point three-five percent. That means seven hundred and seventy people reacted to it, but our reach, the people that saw it, surpassed fifty-seven thousand. Our best posts in the past would top out on reach between ten and fifteen thousand. So while this is an, an example perhaps of an outlier, we know that content like this is what our audiences respond to. They want to see familiar faces and share in our celebrations, so we aim to create more videos and photos featuring people rather than graphics and text. Beyond social media and our website, you've seen some of this style of content through the superintendent's reports this year. Here's another example of a story idea we received from a school and the content we produced. I hope, hold on.
They do a little shopping, they get, gather their vegetables and they come over here and they start to figure out what the cost is of their purchase and they get to practice weights with the scale. They're working on their stem skills, but in a hands-on way while learning about vegetables.
How much did his potatoes weigh?
Two and a half.
Two and a half pounds.
One dollar a pound.
Hopefully kids will develop a love and excitement around these vegetables and, and, you know, eat more healthy foods.
Good job, fifty cents.
So outside of the social media and web-based realm, by the end of the school year, we will also reach our residents through a community-wide mailer delivered to all residential addresses throughout the division. Early in the presentation, on the Engage With Us slide, I asked you to momentarily ignore our volunteer numbers. By numbers alone, that was the highest response to an Engage With Us opportunity. We had more than a thousand individuals express an interest in volunteering in our schools this year. And while that's phenomenal, in the year ahead, we want our volunteer process to become more efficient, both for the volunteer and the area needing support. We found many volunteer applicants that came our way simply wanted to chaperone their child's classroom trip or serve as a mystery reader and that can be managed at the building or the classroom level, while we would connect the broader community with volunteer opportunities. We also look to continue create, continue creating content, telling stories and encouraging our colleagues to share their celebrations with us, evaluate the success of our community-wide mailing, maintain high levels of engagement across social media, including expanding our presence on LinkedIn, and enhance outreach and partnerships to support student achievement and opportunity, family academies, the teacher supply shop and more. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Any questions for Ms. Wall? Yes, Ms. Hunley.
I have a question. So the presentation that they're going to have on vaping, is that an outside agency? Or is that, we have in-house people that are going to do that workshop? That's my first question.
Yep. Let me flip back so I'm giving you the correct information. That is a collaboration, um, uh, with an individual from the outside that they're going to be promoting, uh, promoting, excuse me, presenting on national and local data, what to look for, signs of vaping, um, the effects of its use and a link to the larger cycle of addiction and how to support your child, when to seek help.
Okay, my second question. You said that people can pick topics, is that the community can pick topics? Or, or the staff will pick a topic that could come up?
So that we'd love for the community to express interest on what they want to hear about. We know that, um, topics are more successful when we're meeting somebody's need. So it wouldn't necessarily be that the community would be hand-selecting, but of course, if they do, if they've heard a present, uh, presentation or a presenter before, that they would highly recommend for our community, we would certainly vet that, we welcome that recommendation.
Because they would email.
If they go onto the, uh, division website, the Engage With Us platform, there's a, an option right there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, uh, regarding the family academy, I love that this has been born and that is doing well and I love that, uh, you're attempting to create a menu that the community or parents within our community will choose from because they know what they need to help their student become successful. That's what I hear. Um, Greg, how do we help my son or our daughter do this or that within the school division? And I think they're going to get their answers because they're going to be able to choose what they want to hear. And I think we're going to see some compatibilities or similarities between different households as they see those, the option to say this is what our kid needs support in. So I love it, I think it's going to be wildly successful, I really do. Before we let Ms. Wall go, are there any other questions, comments? Thank you so much, Ms. Wall.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. As you realize, there's been an incredible amount of work done in the Communications Department in the strategic goal this year with, again, that huge focus on family and community engagement, which was one of the things that the school board really wanted to see advance during the school year. So thank you, Ms. Wall, to you and your staff for all your work. And as we're going to get ready for our next, uh, goal, which is Goal, uh, Five, um, uh, Human Resources and, and Positive Culture, Human Capital, and Mr. Baker is going to lead off and then Ms. Trot is going to take over part of the presentation as well to show our progress in this area. You've already received some of this information as we've gone on throughout the year in Human Resources, but Mr. Baker may allude to some of that this evening as well. Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. On behalf of the Department of Human Resources and the Goal Five team, I'm pleased to be here to share progress made this year under Goal Five. This goal centers on human capital and positive culture. Throughout the year, you've received updates from the Human Resources Department and specifically in my presentation to the board on November the first, we covered our recruitment efforts and employee compensation and benefits. While our goal is to always be a hundred percent staffed to be, to begin the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, we were seven teachers short of our goal or we were ninety-nine point three percent staff for instructional positions. Tonight, I want to continue to focus on our collective work to Goal Area Five Point One, strengthen recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools. Anticipating another challenging year for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, we developed a staffing plan and a focus to remaining a hundred percent staffed on the first day of school. The staffing plan included analyzing teacher hiring trends by content area over the five years, evaluating teacher turnover trends, reviewing upcoming teacher retirement eligibility and engaged to student teachers directly. As a result of our analysis, we improved intent survey process, which identified a hundred and forty-one teachers that were uncertain about their plans for next year and we engaged with them on what it takes for them to remain. Principals engaged in stay interviews with instructional staff to help understand the uncertainty towards their employment status for next year. We made seventy-three offers to teachers, early offers to teachers, and thirty-two accepted. Last year, we had twenty-six accept our early offers and the previous year, that number had been about five. An added challenge this year has been maintaining staffing. Since the first day of school, we've hired another twenty-five teachers and a hundred and eighteen support staff and seventy-two new substitutes have been added. Each of these numbers represents ongoing efforts by the Human Resources staff and HR has been able to meet the increased challenge while also preparing for the year ahead. Some of our efforts to be fully staffed for next year also included the analysis of our, the analysis of our hiring trends, which allowed us to make early offers and anticipated needs so we would not be overstaffed in certain content areas. The chart here shows the trends for English, math and elementary over the last few years. We hosted a job fair on January twenty-seventh with a focus on all staff, including teachers, bus drivers, custodians and cafeteria workers. We had seventy-two attendees and it's important to note that we hired four teachers that day and this year we made, again, an offer of over seventy-three early offers to teachers. We also hired three bus drivers that day, a security guard, ten substitutes at that event. In addition to our job fair, we've been up and down the East Coast attending twenty-three additional university job fairs, including seven historically black colleges and universities and tomorrow I will be at Howard University recruiting teachers. Our next focus area is Five Point Two, Developing a Five-Year Total Compensation Strategy Where WJCC Schools Leads the Region in Employee Salaries and Benefits. Updating our data from the November first meeting, we wanted to begin with information on the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for the current bachelor's teachers, which is on the left of each grouping with the lighter shades and then progressing to the right with a seven percent increase for those beginning teachers. For the WJCC scenario, we show in each increasing shade what our salary would be, become if we were one percent more, two percent more or three percent more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current, current school year, our bachelor's degree entry level is fifty thousand dollars. An example of those, in this example, those teachers would move to fifty-five thousand dollars. As on the previous slide regarding bachelor teachers data, this slide we show the impact of our current beginning master's teacher data compared with our neighboring school divisions with the same one percent, two percent or three percent more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current school year, our master's degree entry level is fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. In this example, our teachers could move to fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. But please note, even with three percent more than Newport News and Hampton, these WJCC school beginning teachers would be earning less than Newport News and Hampton. We shared these last two slides as a reminder of where we rank with our key competitors as we prepare to hire and retain teachers for the upcoming school year. Ms. Elena Trot, the Supervisor for Organizational Development and Equity, has done much work under Strategy Five Point Three, Implement a Leadership Development and Mentoring Program. And I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, good evening. As part of Strategy Five Point Three's Leadership Development, this winter, we visited schools to meet with educators who have demonstrated leadership potential and expressed an interest in advancing their careers. These one-on-one meet and greets allowed us to learn more about these dedicated employees and their aspirations, as well as collect feedback on talent development opportunities they would like to see offered within our division. As a result, we have started designing a leadership development series for aspiring administrators who already have their endorsement. This series, which will launch next school year, in this series, which will launch next school year, participants will explore career pathways in WJCC, experience job shadowing opportunities, co-facilitate special projects and events and receive feedback on mock interviews to hone their interests and leadership skills. Additionally, we are excited to begin an educational leadership cohort opportunity with Old Dominion University this May. We've currently accepted eight applicants into the program, which will allow us to infuse WJCC leadership components throughout their program coursework. Continuing with Strategy Five Point Three, under the mentoring program component, we have intentionally increased supports for our newest WJCC educators this year. In addition to onboarding over a hundred and sixty new teachers this summer, we designed a new teacher connect and reflect series to extend our division-level supports in meeting the unique needs of these professionals. The series has included a variety of professional learning choices, a feedback session with Dr. Heron at the end of the first quarter, pulse checks with curriculum and instruction coordinators, a mid-year structured reflection activity with mentors and mentees and we'll conclude in April with another in-person feedback session and celebration. In addition, we had thirteen first-year educators participate in CERN's Novice Teacher Academy. New teacher feedback regarding this program included comments such as, "This has been a place to openly talk about my struggles without feeling judgment." "It allowed for deeper thinking about my class and practices." "Every session offered, offered engaging and positive interactions with other teachers and relevant strategies that can be used at any grade and ability level." "I feel more confident as a teacher after this experience and I have found a positive community of educators, I'm so grateful for my experience." Behind the scenes this year, we enlisted the help of four of our school's lead mentors to serve on a design team to help reimagine our new teacher induction program for our incoming cohort this summer. Our new Launch Program will empower a multi-level, team-based approach to meeting the diverse needs of our new WJCC educators. Informed by the latest research, the Virginia Board of Education's Guidelines for Mentor-Teacher Programs and feedback from our own employees, Launch will intentionally seek to develop community for our new educators, support their continuous growth through personalized mentoring and professional learning and inspire them to leverage their unique gifts as key contributors to our division. The Launch Program also includes structures to build the capacity of school leaders and mentors to support the changing needs of our new teachers. Finally, as new members of Reach Virginia, we are now part of a grant-funded network of twenty-six school divisions working collaboratively to share ideas and resources to strengthen new teacher programs. This membership includes a free annual peer-benched program evaluation to inform our continuous improvement. Under Strategy Five Point Four, Foster a Workplace Culture Where Employees Feel Valued, Well-Informed and Supported Professionally. This year, we are hosting new employee, a new employee webinar series to better inform our employees of resources that are available to them. Our initial webinar focused on supporting educators going through the licensure renewal process and was very well received with one hundred and fifty-one viewers. As a result, we planned three additional webinars this spring, including Maximizing Your Employee Benefits, Financial and Retirement Planning, which is this Thursday, and Employee Emotional Wellness. Partners from Anthem and VRS are joining our Human Resources team to present the information and answer live questions from employees. These recordings are also available on demand and will be an excellent resource for highlighting our total compensation package with prospective employees. Under Strategy Five Point Five, Provide Professional Growth Opportunities for All Categories of Employees, we have offered five hundred and eight professional learning sessions through our Professional Learning Management System this school year. Our WJCC Professional Learning Corner is a digital publication and routine communication that is distributed through our staff update every two weeks. It highlights professional learning opportunities being offered within the division as well as free or low-cost opportunities outside of the division. From book looks to podcast previews, from pro-on-the-go tips to wellness matters strategies, there is truly something for everyone. Our example is our new Microsoft Mondays series, which has been popular among our administrative assistants. We're also designing sessions specifically requested by teacher assistants for our upcoming Collaboration Learning and Planning Day schedule. We want to ensure all of our employees have consistent opportunities to grow in their craft and contribute to our community of lifelong learning. To achieve that aim, we have already started looking ahead to priority initiatives for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Later this month, we'll be conducting a survey to gather feedback on the professional learning needs and preferences of all employee group. needs and preferences of all employee groups, and we'll utilize this data to inform our planning efforts. We will also offer coaching and mentoring workshops to equip teacher leaders and administrators with the knowledge and skills for building capacity in those they support. Related to that effort is RISE, our responsive induction for special education program, which will provide personalized professional learning to special education teachers in their first three years of service with WJCC. Finally, next school year, we will engage our support employees in a design thinking process to develop a more formal support employee training program and alternative pathway programs for those who wish to transition to teaching careers. This is exciting work that will be centered in employee voice and agency to ensure our efforts are authentic, meaningful, and transformative.
This year, under 5.4, foster a workplace of culture where employees feel valued, well-informed, and supported professionally, included the work of the teacher forum and the support employee forum. The purpose of these groups is comprised of the teacher of the year and the support employee of the year honorees, is to elevate staff voice to a shared goal of improving working, teaching, and learning in our division. This year, the teacher forum served on division committees and worked with the CNI department to enhance curriculum resources for next year. The support employee forum sought improvements in areas of benefits, compensation, orientation, and professional development. Their thoughtful feedback guided some of the initiatives that we've already reported on this evening. Also under 5.4 is one of our most highly-profiled recognition events. It's the Teacher of the Year Ceremony, which this year, we are very excited to announce that we have partnered with Colonial Williamsburg to host our event on May 3rd. We will be celebrating with all of our Teachers of the Year and our Rookie Teachers of the Year. We truly have some extraordinary teachers, and this year, we are pleased to return to recognizing and honoring them in person. While we are not able to host a ceremony to honor every staff member every day, heroes of hope remains one way that anyone connected to WJCC schools can recognize and celebrate anyone employed in the division. Listen to what some of our exceptional staff have to say about WJCC schools. There's a video.
Yes, love what I'm doing. And I think it ain't enough money in the world that they could give me that could take this away from me.
The day that I come to school and I'm not with students every day just seems like a miserable day.
They're young, and their brains are just like sponges now, and now's the time to just pick up as much as you can.
It's just like when you come to school, it's like you're another family, so it's
This completes this evening's strategic plan progress report related to Goal 5.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I apologize, I missed your name twice.
Elena Trot.
Ms. Trot, thank you, Ms. Trot, as well. Any questions for Ms. Trot or Mr. Baker on Goal 5? Yes, Ms. Hunt.
I just had a question about the, I think it's slide, it's slide five about the, some of the recruitment data that you're aiming for. Strategy 5.1, strengthen recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pool, and that's great that you're going to Howard University. And I just wondered, when you do go to the HBCUs, do you bring, and this kind of goes to any of the schools, do you bring alumni with you?
We have.
And are you doing that with Howard?
I'm going with Bobby Shockley, who works with me. He's a former teacher, a former principal. He's not an alum of Howard. Not aware of an alum at Howard right now.
Do you try to, I mean?
We do, we solicit.
If you solicited, or you?
We solicit to our principals and assistant principals, and we have a lot of folks who are alums of, like, Old Dominion or Virginia State.
Right, I mean, just any of them, not just HBCUs, but just to be, like, they could wear something that says they're an alumni or something.
Very much, yes.
That's very much part of our process and planning, and we don't always succeed in taking one, but for the majority of the visits, we take someone with us. And we also analyze the data, time spent, money, number of applicants we get from each of the universities, and reassess where to go to in the following year.
When you go to Liberty, let me know. I'll tag along on my own dime.
We hired somebody today for Liberty.
Fantastic. Ms. Hundley.
Yes, I would like to encourage you to please, I know of 10 HBCU teachers that have wanted to go and wear their school and sit at the table for questions. It's different when students come and they are asking administrators questions and not teachers. So I do know two from Virginia Union, three from Virginia State, two from Norfolk State, and three from Hampton University. And they're, I know we have a problem this year with getting subs if they want to go, but most of them said they would take a personal day just to connect with teachers. And I'm sure if they're teachers from William &amp; Mary, Virginia Tech, ODU, I don't, you know, that could come and wear their things as well. But definitely for the HBCUs, if we can just try that, ask some teachers to wear their outfits and try to help with recruitment. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Any other comments or questions? I do have one. I believe it was slide 11. It was new teacher connect and reflect sessions. I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about that endeavor, how successful has it been? And yeah, just curious.
Yeah, sure. We've had, we have five planned for this year, so it's a combination of both virtual and in-person sessions to try to accommodate our teachers' capacity and all that they have to carry. But we had, our first one was a virtual session, and we had choices for them to go into breakout rooms and learn about different topics that they might be interested in, as well as meet with the curriculum and instruction coordinators to get the content updates that they needed. The second one, we did in-person at Lafayette High School, and we divided them into brand-new beginning teachers as well, and then another group of new but experienced teachers. And we know that they have different needs, so we did a protocol to gather some feedback from each group, and they also had an opportunity to meet with their CNI coordinators at that time. At the mid-year, we had them bring their mentors that have been assigned to them at their schools, and we did a structured reflection activity where they were able to unpack how things are going between their relationship, mentor-mentee relationship, and then set some goals for the second half of the school year. The last one that we had, we were not able to fully see, but we got some recordings for them to watch. And then we will have one more here on April 28th, which will be in-person as well, and at that time, we'll, again, ask them to do some reflection protocols to really think about their growth.
I don't imagine you have to kind of be signed up in advance? You don't have to, maybe I should ask, is this open to any new or new, or I guess, been here with experience, however you phrase that? Can they come along to that fifth session if they've not been a part of the first or the third?
Absolutely, absolutely. They are all optional. We haven't mandated any of them, but they are enjoying them. And they received calendar invitations for all of the dates at the beginning of the year, so we went ahead and marked their calendars for them. And so, yes, we send them reminders as the dates near as well.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Ward, go.
Do we have anywhere in one slide, an overview of the percentage of returning staff of any kind from one September to the next year-over-year?
We can get that for you, yeah.
We provide in the reports that you receive when the year of hiring is complete, in that report, we give a lot of that information, retention and turnover data, but we can certainly get that for you as well. It's sort of an annual thing, because we're right in mid-season, we usually do it in September, October.
Okay, well, if you had one from last year even, or just tell me where, tell me later where it is. I just.
I can resend it, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Trot, Mr. Baker, for the update on progress of Goal 5. Thank you so much.
I just make one comment, Mr. Chair, as well, just to thank the staff of Human Resources for their hiring every single day and trying to get us fully staffed again this year. To come within seven teachers of being fully staffed last year was no less than a miracle, and they did an excellent job, and I know they're full steam ahead for this year. And also, Ms. Trot has brought such an expertise to the division in terms of professional learning and development, and her focus has been so much on new teachers this year because our focus is on keeping new teachers in the profession, and that's continuing with all of her planning for next year. So thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, Dr. Heron, we'll move on to 7-2, discussion of the fiscal year 24 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we wanted to bring you an update on where we are in the budget, following the publishing of the city and county budgets in the last couple of weeks, and let you know where we are in terms of meeting our goals for budget. Ms. Yuen is going to take you through a few slides this evening, just for information.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The localities have released their proposed budgets for fiscal year 2024, so this evening, we will be reviewing the impact to our operating budget, as well as information related to the compensation supplement funding from the state. At the last board meeting, the fiscal year 2024 budget was approved for a total of $176 million, which included a 10% salary increase for staff and requested approximately $107.5 million from the localities. When comparing the amount of funding for the school division in the locality's budget documents, which includes $2 million in contingency funding from James City County, the total is $103.6 million, which results in a revenue shortfall of $3.9 million. The James City County budget proposal includes $2 million as a separate amount of contingency funding. The final amount will be determined once the state's budget is approved and the amount of state funding is known. We have been advised by county administration that this is the amount set aside for the school division, and we can expect to receive the full $2 million in the event that no additional funding is approved at the state level. At the joint meeting last month, there was discussion about providing different salary increases to different groups of employees. The current state budget, as adopted by the 2022 Special Session 1 of the General Assembly, includes the state share of compensation supplement revenue based on a 5% salary increase effective July 1, 2023, for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. But what does this mean and what positions are included? This table shows the various instructional and support positions that are part of SOQ funding. For instructional positions, this covers principals, assistant principals, counselors, various teachers, kindergarten assistants, and special education aides. For support positions, it includes assistant superintendents, various clerical and technical staff in different areas, as well as some operations and maintenance staff. These positions go across our entire school division, from support staff to administrative staff. Salary increases for these individuals are funded in part by revenue received from the state. So, at a minimum, all employees must receive a pay raise equal to the funding provided by the state. As an example, school counselors are funded at a ratio of 325 to 1 by the state, but we currently staff at a ratio of 250 to 1 and have 47.5 FTEs. State funding is provided for 33.5 of those FTEs. This table shows a sample of some of the SOQ-funded position categories that I just shared, and compares the SOQ-funded FTE to our budgeted FTE for each category, as well as the corresponding pay scale that each position category is paid on. As an example, for assistant principals who are paid on our administrative pay scale, the state provides funding for eight FTEs, while we employ 28 FTEs. Operations and maintenance positions include custodians, security guards, maintenance workers, the senior director for operations, as well as the facility supervisor. SOQ funding is provided for 88 FTEs, while we employ 108. At the minimum, all WJCC employees must receive the percentage salary raise that is included in the state budget, as it covers a wide variety of positions from custodians to assistant superintendents and goes across all of our pay scales. The current state budget includes a 5% pay raise, while both the House and Senate budget versions include a 7% pay raise. Based on the current James City County and City of Williamsburg-proposed fiscal year 24 funding for the school division, including the county's contingency funding, we must reduce our budget by $3.9 million. As salaries and benefits make up 87% of our budget, the only place to reduce this amount is by reducing the salary increase from 10% to 7%, which is approximately $3.3 million. We would propose not funding the 1% one-time bonus payment as proposed in Governor Youngkin's budget. This will save an additional $1 million on the expenditure side and will reduce state revenue by $321,000, which will balance our budget. Neither the adopted 2022 to 2024 state budget nor the House and Senate versions include this 1% bonus payment. These adjustments will balance our budget with the funding that has been allocated within the locality's proposed budgets for next fiscal year. A salary increase of 7% is only possible with the additional $2 million in contingency funding from James City County. We've discussed adjustments needed based on the locality's proposed budgets, but there may be additional adjustments that are needed depending on where the state budget ends up. The school board-approved budget includes state revenue based on Governor Youngkin's amendments to the 2022-2024 biennial budget. This table shows a comparison of various state budget versions as compared to Governor Youngkin's proposal. The skinny budget essentially amends the initial 2022-2024 budget enacted in June 2022. It does not include any of the governor's amendments introduced in December. If this ultimately becomes the state budget, then we are looking at a reduction of $430,000 more in revenue. Under the House budget version, we could see additional revenue of $555,000, while the Senate version could provide additional revenue up to $4.4 million. Both the House and Senate versions provide for a 7% salary increase. We are hopeful that when the General Assembly reconvenes this week, that a budget compromise is reached, and we will see additional funding somewhere between these two amounts. It is critical to advocate at the state level for public education funding.
Can I stop right there for a second? I understand the House, I understand the Senate. What is skinny budget?
The skinny budget is essentially the amendments that the General Assembly passed before they adjourned a month or so ago, and it essentially amends the budget that they passed in June of 2022.
So if they don't take action in the special session with what stays, what the amendments that they did take place before they, when Sunny die, that's skinny? That's the skinny budget?
That's the skinny budget. Yes, sir.
So basically, it reverts to Governor Northam's budget with amendments.
Correct.
You said Northam. Okay, yes, 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 thank you. Yeah, I'm with you now.
Former Governor Northam.
You're right, yeah.
So our worst-case scenario is they do nothing, and we end up with less. The best-case scenario is somewhere in the middle. You heard Ms. Yuen mention contingency, contingency, contingency tonight. The intent, having had a long conversation with the city and county administrators yesterday, is they have a contingency of $2 million that they will provide to the school division should we not get any more state funding. However, if we were to get $2 million extra funding from the state, then they wouldn't provide that contingency to us. So they're keeping that in reserve in case we don't get additional money from the state.
And they're currently at four? They're currently at four?
Currently, they have published a budget with $4 million. They're keeping two in contingency. If we get nothing more from the state, they're going to try to, they're going to give us an extra $2 million to get us to that 7% raise.
Are you, I open this up to questions. Are you ready for questions, Ms. Yuen?
I have one more slide, but I'm open to whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you.
So lastly, we wanted to share the impact of the healthcare increase of 9.9% as compared to a 7% salary increase. Employees have varying options when choosing healthcare coverage to include employee coverage up to family coverage. This graphic shows the net impact for the best-case scenario, which is employee-only coverage on the Key Advantage 500 Plan, represented by the green bars, and the worst-case scenario, which is family coverage on the Key Advantage 250 Plan. This is shown for a master's-level teacher, Step 0 and Step 15, as well as custodial employees at the minimum in the midpoint. You can see in all scenarios that employees would receive a net increase as all are above the red line, which represents zero.
as all are above the red line, which represents 0 on the graph.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. So this is informational at best at this juncture, waiting on further action from the General Assembly in Richmond, waiting on further action from our funding partners. With that said, Ms. Ortega and this, Ms. Donner?
I just had a clarifying question about the 2 million contingency. Is it that it would be up, they will make up to 2 million? So if we get an additional 500,000, would they give 1.5 million? Does it work that way, up to 2? Or is it like, if we get any more, we don't get it?
Basically, they, their intent from the administrative understanding is to provide up to 2 million from the locality should we not receive money from the state. So if we were to receive 500,000, they might give us 1,500. If we were to get a windfall of 4 million from the state, then I think that 2 million would stay with the county, and I think there'll be some negotiation as to what would happen at that point in time. But they want to leave us, and if we come in tonight without that conversation, we're looking at 4 million extra and 5% across the board, period. We couldn't issue contracts any larger than that with the 4 million that was put in both budgets. The discussion about that contingency fund leaves us in a better position to issue contracts at 7% raise, which is excellent across the board, and will provide our staff an excellent raise, not 5, but 7. And they are holding that money in case we don't get additional state money. They're holding that for us and partnering with us in that.
Any other comments or questions at this phase in the conversation? Yes, Michelle?
Okay, so if the Senate version of the budget didn't pass, it'd be 4 million, just rounding it off. So the $2 million, the 2 million, it was $2 million, right? Contingency fund, we wouldn't get that from the county and city.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
So what, but you said there's, there would be some discussion about the additional $2 million? Now, would it automatically come to the school division?
It would automatically come to the school division, but the county would, you know, reserve the right to adjust the budget that they would provide to us.
Any others? Excuse me, any others as we take this in? I see a wheel spinning across the room. We can pause for a second. Yes, Ms. Hummel?
Still just a clarifying about if we get the 4 million. I'm just saying, like, everything's wonderful, and it goes to the Senate, and we get 4 million additional. So the 2 million contingency goes away, but they're not going to go less than the 2 million. Is that correct?
It's difficult for me to speak. I can just speak from a conversation yesterday about the 2 million. It's hard to talk about something. We don't know what's happened yet. And I certainly can't speak for the Board of Supervisors, or for the Board for that matter. But the intention is to make sure that if there's no additional money provided by the General Assembly, that the localities will provide 2 million more.
So they're making us whole at 7%. Is the, is that the general idea?
That has been the conversation at this moment in time, which enables us to issue contracts at 7% rather than 5% and enables us to keep employees within our school division. I asked for a meeting yesterday so that I could express concerns about the potential of a 5% raise across the board, which would leave us not competitive in the region, and this, they're intending to keep us whole at 7%.
Yes, Ms. Donner?
Have we seen any of the other locality's budgets to see where they are coming in at either from the City of Hampton, or Newport News, or their school divisions?
They're in different places. Not all are finalized. A lot are trying to wait as long as possible to see what the General Assembly will do. The last, my last look at York is they were 5% because they're working off the governor's budget. Nothing else. You can't assume anything else. But we've been given reason to assume that there will be more for us, even should nothing else happen. Thank you.
Maybe you...
Ms. Hummel and Ms. Ortega?
When do we know about, when do we know when the General Assembly will make a decision one way or the other?
It's to come back to the table, I believe, this month, but there has been some newspaper articles that suggest they won't make a decision until June, which is way too late for contracts for us.
Thanks.
There's so many unknowns. Encouraged by the fact that we at least have something that we do know at this moment in time. And all of this will depend upon the Board of Supervisors approving a budget with the 4 million and being very explicit about the 2 million in contingency and how that will be used. And that will enable us to then approve a budget and deliver contracts.
Ms. Ortega?
If we have the worst-case scenario where we actually, if we have the worst-case scenario where we actually get even less, the 436,000 less, what does that do to the 2 million contingency?
I think that 2 million remains the same.
Okay, so it's overall not quite seven?
However, we would then go back and look into our budget to find that money, to keep the 7%.
That's going to be my question about contracts, then. How would we?
Absolutely. We will make sure we have a way to make that number if we need to. It will be a reduction in staff or a reduction in something that we need, but it will still allow us to issue contracts at a level which is, which is still good.
So thank you, Dr. Hearn. This is all new information. It's rapidly evolving. I appreciate the fact that you have that relationship with our city and county, with your counterparts at the city and county, so that the conversation can continue. And I think they're just, they're proving that they are very supportive of this school division and want to see the best for teachers and faculty and staff and parents and students. But there's more to be known just yet, so we wait. We'll move on to our policies. So we have, I believe, 11 policies to review this evening to take action on next week. And I think we're waiting, oh, there he is.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever is joining us from another location this evening. He's on vacation with his family and good resistance joining us for policies this evening. Thank you, Mr. Keever, for being here.
There is nothing I like more than spending time talking about school board policies. We're going forward 11 this evening on behalf of the many and senior leadership. And if it's okay with you, Chair Dow, I'll start with Policy IJ, which I believe is Agenda Item 8.01. I'll run through the policies. There are persons who are available who want to answer any specific questions the board may have, but I feel pretty good about the process that we have this evening, the policies being forward.
Please, we won't delay you. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, terrific. Policy IJ is the school counseling program's policy. This particular policy, the revision components include some altering slightly of the language within the policy itself. There is a specific section, Section 2, that would be scheduled for removal and included in our regulation. There's also allowing to be recommended adding around providing a superintendent or bringing the superintendent to propagate regulations. This is based on the TERTY guidance. An additional cross-reference was added. It's listed in Policy J O, G B language.
Any questions for Mr. Keever on IJ? Okay, we'll move on, sir, to JHH.
Yes, sir, thank you. This policy, JHH, Student Welfare Suicide, was last revised in October 2017. We are suggesting some additional language outlining that the school division aligns with state guidelines supporting the students who are struggling, added a specific legal reference in terms of a reporting requirement, and also updated the BTOE Suicide Prevention Guide line and revision date. There are a couple of additional cross-references that were added as well.
I'm just gonna, just for the board's understanding, I'm just gonna pause and look. If you have any questions or comments or concerns, chime in. Otherwise, we're gonna press on. We'll move on to GB. Mr. Keever?
Yes, sir. Okay, great. That's 803. GB is the first of several G policies that we bring forward for the board's review this evening. This particular policy is equal employment and nondiscrimination. And it was last revised in 2015. This policy now, as is being suggested in terms of revision, would align with the SBA model policy. And also sincerity, I think that we, as a senior leadership team, believe this should have been revised in 2021. Maybe some other references to nondiscrimination policies on the student side. But that, that I was merely informed this evening for your review. Lines 11 through 13 are updated to align with the SBA model policy on equal employment and nondiscrimination. We've changed some cases in terms of the uppercase S's and Bs, and updated our compliance officer information. I can answer questions on GB.
Okay, it looks like we're all good, sir?
The next one is GCBAA, Professional Staff National Board Certification Program. This particular policy does not have a corresponding SBA. It was last revised by the school division in 2017. The formatting is updated for consistency with other policies. We've also updated the legal and cross-references. Just want to underscore before our public that we are not recommending any changes to the National Board Program or how the school division supports that, but we did need to revise some of the language in the policy itself.
Thank you for that clarification.
The next policy this evening, the next policy this evening is GCCB. This would be a new policy. We generally like to bring forward retiring policies. In particular, we do feel like we need to add a policy to our policy manual. This specific one is related to how or in what cases we could employ family members, both at school board or superintendent. There's very specific information that was listed within the policy around that topic. Additionally, it lays out some supervisory expectations and responsibilities in terms of not being supervised by a direct payment.
I can't tell you how timely this policy is. We'll talk offline.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, do we have the next one?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. The next one is Policy GCI, Professional Staff Assignments and Transfers. This particular policy, some very minor changes. The last reviewed in 2017, the language does align with the SBA model policy. There's no change to process. There's no change necessarily to the wording, just some updated reference.
I think we can move on to GCL?
Yes, sir. Professional Staff Development. This particular policy was last revised in 2021. However, there is a need by way of state code to add an additional revision to that as those are included in lines 41 through 44, related to Virginia Code and the requirement that licensed teachers participate in a required cultural competence training in accordance with guidelines issued by the Virginia Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. Item 88?
Yes, sir. School Year as Policy IC. This policy was last reviewed in 2001. There were some significant revisions that needed to occur with this particular policy, related to changes in state code and expectations in terms of how, in terms of how makeup time and makeup days were addressed. You'll note that our previous policy was approximately one sentence long, and our revised policy is a number of different points. It does align very specifically with the SBA policy and the requiredness of the Virginia Code.
And then item 89, sir?
Yes, sir. Item 89, School Attendance Areas. This is the first of two additional J policies we want to talk about this evening. School Attendance Areas was last revised by the board in February 2017. No specific content changes. Add its cross-reference information to this call of policies and updated legal references to ensure alignment with the SBA.
So yeah, that one was just the cross-reference and the legal references.
Yes, sir.
And then item 810, JFG?
Yes, sir. That's a search and seizure. This particular policy was last revised in 2018. We modified the introductory wording to emphasize the health, safety, and welfare of students and staff. We changed the word effects to belongings because we felt like that added some additional clarity. Added policy and procedure for competence and understanding. We added very specific language around WJCC staff not being authorized to conduct a strict search, and that the police officers would need to follow their established procedures for their respective jurisdictions. Cross-references were also updated as well.
That's a great addition.
Say again, sir?
That's a fantastic addition. And then 811, LB, Policy LB?
Policy LB was last adopted, excuse me, was adopted in 1984. There's not specifically a SBA model policy for LB. We are recommending that the title be changed in this particular policy. So currently, the title is Relations with Other Schools and School Divisions. We believe it ought to be Relations with Private Schools. And in essence, this policy gives permission to the school board and superintendent to work with private schools on areas of mutual concern and interest. And specifically, there's a code reference in Virginia Code that talks about in the event that we wanted to provide or offer transportation services, we could do that.
Any questions on that, Ms. Ortega?
Would this, would this relate to any kind of extracurricular or sports teams?
No, ma'am. If I understood your question correctly, it would be related specifically to entering into an agreement with a private school to help support or provide transportation to and from school.
Oh, just transportation?
Say that one more time, Ms. Ortega.
It just pertains, it just pertains to transportation? Because I don't see that word.
Yes, I'm sorry. I had a little bit of a hard time hearing you. I want to, maybe Mr. Snyder or Miss Wall could address that question.
The question is regarding Policy LB, Education Agency Relations, relations between WJCC schools and private schools, is the relationship only to do with transportation, offering transportation to other private schools that can't meet their own transportation needs? Is that your question, Ms. Ortega?
That's my question, based on what Mr. Keever said. But yeah, I don't see that, but it's what he said, so that was my question.
Well, I think that the code reference is a code reference that we've included or revised. We provide school divisions the opportunity to enter into relationships with private schools in order to support or provide transportation. If there were other scenarios outside of the transportation realm that were mutually supportive or of mutual interest between WJCC and a private school, there would be an option for us to pursue that. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Ms. Donner? Excuse me, Ms. Ortega?
Oh.
Did that answer your question?
I suppose. I think it's still vague what the mutual interests are.
Am I understanding that certain mutual interests are embedded within state code?
Yep.
What those interests might be?
Oh, the links are there. Oh.
I see the links, but does the code elaborate on what those might be?
I think Miss Wall may have the answer.
So, yes, in the model policy from the SBA, there are only two state code references. One is about the bylaws and regulations of a school board, the authority granted to a school board. And the second reference alludes to agreements to provide transportation for non-public school pupils. It grants authority to school boards to enter agreements with non-public schools to provide student transportation. So those are the only cross-references as it pertains to... So, those are the only cross-references as it pertains to this policy.
Okay.
Okay. I think that does answer the question.
Hmm.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you. Sorry that I didn't fully understand what, I couldn't fully hear you. I apologize.
It's okay.
We're good. Any other questions around LB? I know that for our viewing audience, listening audience, we breezed through pretty quickly, uh, eleven policies, but I just want to, uh, express the thanks that we have to our policy committee who, with the help of Mr. Kiefer and, uh, the senior leadership team that, uh, meets with our policy committee, does all the heavy lifting ahead of these meetings. And then, of course, the, um, the agenda is published on the Thursday before meeting, so we all have access to all these policies. We're able to get a lot of our questions answered, if we even had any, um, but a lot of these policies were really straightforward. Uh, thank you for the, um, for the further clarification on LB as well. Um, I don't know if, i- is there any objection to adding these eleven policies to our consent agenda? Okay, we will do that. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer, and please extend our thanks and apologies to your family. Seriously, please do. We don't want, we don't want them hating us. Thank you so much.
He even brings his WJCC swag on vacation. He's got the shirt on.
Go back to vacation.
Beyond the call of duty.
All right. Okay, we're gonna move on to item, our action items for the evening. Um, first up is, uh, our personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I think, was that Ms. Hunley?
It was a tie.
Ms. Ordigo. Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, and, uh, without further ado, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. And item nine two, if there's a motion, if I can have a motion to approve the Award of Contract for Request for Proposal, nine dash two zero two three zero eight five four Audit Services to Cherry Beckett with an initial cost of seventy-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-three? Is there a motion?
I move, oh, go ahead.
I move to approve the Award of Contract for Request for Proposal, number nine dash two zero two three zero eight five four Audit Services to Cherry Beckett with the initial cost of seventy-five thousand for fiscal year two, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? I th- I, I don't know how long we've been with Brown Edwards. Is it Brown Edwards, Edward Brown? I'm not asking for an answer, but it's been a while, right? Okay, so, um, we've, uh, given this, or we aim to give the, uh, award to Cherry Beckett, uh, a competing agency, and I'm sure that, uh, they've met all of the concerns that we might have of a, uh, financial auditing firm. Any questions for Ms. Ewing or Ms. Doctor Herron? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo? Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. Okay. Let's, uh, round off our evening with board member comments. Can I start with, I almost did, I'm not gonna do it, Ms. Young?
Sure. Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have many to say other than everybody welcome back. Hope you had a nice spring break. It seemed awful short to me for some reason. Uh, I did notice school buses running again today. That's always a good sign. And, um, hope that this next grading period is, um, goes quickly and, um, our students are successful and thank our teachers for being back on duty and our, um, other staff members today. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Uh, Ms. Donner?
Uh, thank you. I have a couple of things. One is, uh, had the opportunity to attend an interview session at, um, Lafayette High School. So, this week, if there's anyone, uh, who's available to go and interview our high school students and do mock interviews with them, there's still some slots available. Uh, it was an amazing experience. Uh, the, the kids came with resumes and, um, just, uh, I, some of them were better than some adults I've interviewed in my, in my, in my work. Uh, so, just really excited for that and to just see so many community members, um, as well as those that work for, uh, James City County, all kind of coalescing around our students. Um, I also would like to recognize the SHIP program. Um, I was late today because I was at the, Matthew Whaley had their final SHIP, uh, today, and so I got to see the flag football team. It was parents versus students. Uh, it, I didn't see anybody limping off, so that was a good thing. And then, um, I got to participate in the Quidditch match of students versus parents, which is also very interesting. Um, but just wonderful to see that and with the support of the Williamsburg Health Foundation, um, that supports the SHIP program. It's just a wonderful way to get kids involved in sports and in healthy eating, as we saw, uh, on the video, and it's just a wonderful, um, opportunity. Uh, and then, lastly, I think, just with the Career Advisory Committee, I didn't get a chance to say this in the earlier part, but there's just so many wonderful things that are happening there. Uh, there will be a, of, a, a fair for students who want to have summer jobs. Um, we're just getting a lot of connections with, uh, companies in the community, and so it's just a great opportunity for our students. And really, the team is innovative about talking about how do, do we support our students that may not be going directly to college and might be going into trades and things, and how do we make those, um, that special for them as well as they embark onto the next part of their lives? So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Uh, Ms. Hunley?
Yes, I wanted to, uh, talk about our, our Tampa, um, convention we went to. I'm always excited to go as a leader and a learner, and I learned a lot. Um, I know I had at least eight, most of us did at least seven to eight sessions. And, um, one thing that I found very interesting thinking about buses, and this just scared me to death, but they were talking about, um, are our kids ready for this next round of technology? And they were showing trucks that drive without a driver to deliver things. And I thought about our bus shortage. And I said, oh, my gosh, I, I guess they could in the future have buses taking kids with no driver, but I'm sure there would be a bus monitor of some sort, but I mean, really, thinking out of the box, I mean, they have robots that were building houses. So, just thinking out of the box like that, that just, and then I just saw on television last night a few cars that they have that are driving without a driver, and the camera's on top, so it knows when to stop and when people cut over. So, anyway, that was just new, something I learned, is where we may be going in the future with technology. Um, also, um, we don't, I think the viewing public thinks that as a board, we get to see each other often and talk, and it was just nice to have time with board members where we could just be, just talk about our families and, 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 um, just enjoy each other. It helps with building relationships, and that's very important. Um, also, um, this is probably the first time I haven't been to any schools to talk about children, but I do want to say that when I was a teacher, um, it has always, uh, been a request from teachers of, you know, all kinds, teachers from all walks, to be present at, um, some of our recruiting events. And so, with our Goal Five presentation tonight, I just want to say again, I ran on, um, wanting to have a diverse, uh, staff and make sure that we have, uh, especially teachers of, of, of color. And, um, the, I wanna be in the room where it happens, and now I'm in the room where it happens, but now I'm not satisfied with that. I want to be at the table where it happens. And I just want, um, us to really extend that invitation to, to teachers that want to be at the table where it happens to, um, help with our recruiting efforts. I think that it would help tremendously, and that's something I feel very passionate about. So, I just wanted to say that again tonight in support of Goal Five in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Uh, Ms. Hummel?
Sure. Um, well, tomorrow at seven thirty in the morning, I'm gonna be doing the mock interview, so I'm really happy to hear that it, it went so well. I was excited to kind of sign up for that, so we'll see how that goes. And then, um, on Monday, we'll be going to Clairebird Baker and seeing Bright Beginnings because it's been a while, I wanna say three years, since I've actually talked to anyone about Bright Beginnings. So, I think it'll be really interesting to, to see and talk to the Bright Beginnings people and then see kind of like how they're envisioning the, the new, um, you know, initiative of everybody in, in these, um, pre-care centers for the future. So, anyway, that's what I'm looking forward to. And then, I'm thinking about all, mainly because my kids were all very involved in musicals, and my heart is out there with all of these, uh, students that are tap dancing, that are working on their costumes and memorizing lines and everything for the upcoming spring musicals. It's, there's a lot of activity going on, uh, once the kids come back from spring break to get ready for the, the performances at the middle schools and the high schools. So, thinking about them, also appreciating my fellow board members, um, at the, the conference that we went to. It was really, um, uh, one of the things that, when you do go to these conferences and you, you, you hear about the challenges of other school boards, and we're really lucky here at WJCC to have the, the relationships that the school boards have with the administrators and with the parents and the family people. It's just, it's, uh, and the students. So, I, I always come back from those thinking, um, that we're very fortunate to, to be able to represent this school district.
I absolutely agree. Thank you for that. Uh, I don't have much to, oh, Ms. Ordigo. Goodness gracious, I've got a checklist here.
Okay.
Ms. Ordigo?
It's okay.
Um, I, I don't have a whole lot. I just wanna echo, um, my colleague's sentiments about the conference. It was, um, I feel very grateful that we were able to go. It was an inaugural conference of, of a new organization, so I think we were all pretty curious how that was gonna be compared to, um, our experiences at, at past conferences. And I think it, I, I just thought it was really well done, especially for being a brand-new organization. There, there were tremendous learning opportunities. And, um, and I think that going into those sessions, that there is so much learning and so much growth that does happen, that does really further the work of our board in addition to, um, as my colleague said, just furthering our own relationships. Because of, because of the laws that exist about how we can and cannot interact, it really is, it's really hard to, to operate as a whole board and, all, you know, at times. And so, I, I was incredibly appreciative of, um, furthering relationships with Dr. Herron and with my board colleagues. And, um, I know we, we have our challenges in this division, but, but like Ms. Hummel said, we have really exceptional people on our board that, you know, my colleagues are all exceptional, and I was grateful to get to know them better. Um, and I think I have some school visits coming up. I think we're going somewhere tomorrow. Um, and next week, I will also be seeing Bright Beginnings, which I'm excited about because I don't think I've ever seen that. So, so, yeah, I'm, I'm excited. Last, last few weeks of school, I think I saw a teacher, friend of mine, post on Facebook, seven more Mondays. And that might have been yesterday, so maybe there's only six. I don't know, but countdown begins, right? So, I hope everyone has a safe and fun end of the school year.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Um, not a whole lot to add to any of that, but I'm curious, Ms. Donner, you didn't get into the, uh, flag football?
I, I did not. They did not invite me. I wasn't appropriately dressed, but they did allow me to play goalie for Quidditch.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm sure you represented as well.
It was nice. There are a lot of dads out there playing with the boys and the girls. There's boys and girls on the flag football team, which was super awesome.
Awesome. That's great. Um, yeah, uh, Tampa was a great opportunity for us, and, and that was really, if, for what it's worth, pleased with our board that we were able to keep that barrier up and keeping outsider away from business and just really hone our relationship. And I think, uh, and Dr. Herron as well, um, uh, I think it, we're gonna see the benefit of it, uh, in weeks and months to come and even in years to come as, uh, you three continue to lead the division with, uh, with, um, relationship and trust and civility in mind. Um, move on to our upcoming events. Um, the Special Education Advisory Committee meets on, uh, April thirteenth at six thirty, uh, here in Central Office, Room three hundred. And then, uh, Policy Committee meets on the twenty-sixth of April at eight thirty, and that's a virtual meeting over Zoom. Uh, also on the twenty-sixth, the Student Advisory Committee meets at three in the afternoon at James Donner High School Media Center. And then, yes, Ms. Aller, I will be there, the Support Employee of the Year Celebration. I hadn't responded to that email, but I apologize. April twenty-seventh at ten thirty in the morning, King of Glory Church on Long Hill Road. Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, closed session, regular session next week, the eighteenth, uh, six and six thirty respectively. Uh, we don't have anything earlier than six, right? We're still six, okay? Um, beginning here in Room three hundred and then pushing over to the, uh, James Blair Middle School Gymnasium at six thirty. And then, on May second, our closed session followed by our work session, uh, three forty-five and four thirty respectively, um, both here in Room three hundred of Central Office. Uh, our agenda is set for our next meeting, which is next week, the eighteenth. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.